That all sounds terrific. Amir Sadadi, Department of Transportation, thanks for joining us in Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much. Pleasure to be here.
And again, your Los Angeles City Council unanimously approved the Hail a Taxi pilot program to help make Los Angeles more cab-friendly. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall, and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 18, 2008. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Hey, John, lower the gun, buddy. John, leave the gun.
Working as a team.
Go ahead and put the gun down. John, nobody's gonna come at you, all right? But I'd feel a whole lot better if you were to lower that gun.
To protect and to serve.
Why don't you come back here to me, all right? All right, that's good. Walk toward me with your hands up, John. Put your hand up.
All units, code 46.
Thanks for working with me.
Two nine ten, show me code six, and the article search for the Amber Alert.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
Another positive hit on this bag.
We believe at this time that the vehicle is in our custody.
Any available unit to respond to the northeast corner, seventh and North, turn the Amber Alert.
Six K to the fifty right.
What do you need, eleven? Show's responding.
Take them away, man.
This is it.
Let's go.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Protecting our families.
Look at your daddy.
They take pride in what they do.
Code from the Amber Alert, missing child found, in return to parent, suspect in custody.
LAPD is hyping. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.[227.45]
George? And again, if I could please ask everyone to hold down their conversations. Shh.
Thank you very much. As a 28-year-old, teaching for 28 years, I asked my classroom to be quiet when I talked. Thank you. I'm here on a very serious matter. My daughter has conquered anorexia. For those of you that don't know what anorexia is, it's a disease where the kids think they're too fat. I'll still wait till it's quiet. Thank you. The other matter is, is there a dentist in the house? We've been trying to get a dentist for her. She has nine fillings, one root canal and two crowns. Right now, in West LA, many dentists refuse to take anorexics. UCLA refuses to take her. Kaiser refuses to take her. Again, is there a dentist in the house? I need, I think we need an umbrella for those kids that are in danger of dying because they don't have teeth. And if they don't have teeth... Thank you. If they don't have teeth, they can only eat mashed potatoes and macaroni and possibly die. So is there a dentist somewhere in the house? Or can we have an umbrella, insurance for those kids that are in dire need of dental care? Thank you.
Thank you. And sir, there are, I would encourage you through the County Health Department, there are some clinics and so forth that would be able to hopefully help that individual. Lucy Caruso? You pass on the public comment? Okay. Zuma Dog?
Yes, yes, aye. Rastafari, Big Zuma Dog, maximum respects, y'all. And I'll be reading from zoomatimes.com about Jack Weiss, questions that I would like answered. I see his name is up there, but I don't see Jack Weiss. And the first thing, the City of Los Angeles would like to request that Councilmember Jack Weiss waive Zion's motion regarding Special Order 40 amendments to the council floor. If you could talk to him, council members, because there's a lot... Oh, and here comes Councilmember Weiss. Thank you.
Again, we could ask you that you do...
I'm directing to everybody here. The Councilmember Weiss has walked in. I didn't direct to him. I directed to council that Jack Weiss just walked in. Thank you. Because from LA Daily Blog, someone sent me an email. It says, "Does Jack Weiss leave council after roll call, go to his office, and illegally make fundraising phone calls on city phones?" So that's something I'll be looking into. Also, we understand that we need to do a public records request with the city clerk to see how many council and committee meetings Jack Weiss has missed over the past year. By the way, in case people don't know, Councilmember Weiss is running for city attorney, and that's why he's not here, because it's alleged that he's in his office making illegal campaign contributions. It also says here that, oh, if Jack Weiss has never argued a case in Superior Court, how is he qualified to be city attorney? Ask Jack Weiss to discuss LA Superior Court case BY545318. It's a paternity complaint. Here's something. Jack Weiss's campaign manager is Antonio Vierigosa. People would like to ask...
Mr. LaBange, the city attorney, we've asked the city attorney already, so he indicated that he wouldn't do it.
Okay, my question is, my que... Please do not interrupt me, council members. Can Antonio Vierigosa open up his shirt?
Excuse me, Madam President. Can we hold this time? He needs to be respectful in his discussion and abide by the rules of decorum.
Well, I'm trying to, but other council members are impeding. My final question is, can Antonio Vierigosa open his shirt to prove he does not have Gangs Rule tattooed on his chest? More to come at ladailyblog.com.
Donna Pearman in the San Fernando Valley.
Okay, first I just want to say, welcome back, Councilwoman Smith. It's been a while. Listening to you on council phone on Wednesday, I realize you really don't have a clue on why we are here. You know you have your normal ordinance mixed with great ideas of public expense. You love talking to each other, to yourselves, and channel 35 viewers you hope to impress. Every once in a while, remember us like Councilwoman Alarcon and Councilwoman Cardenius' sales tax, because they guarantee projects. But of course, but of course, it passed. Maybe you should just impose the sales tax. Most people won't really look at the project, say, "Ooh, it helps transportation." So maybe you should just tax the slaves to death. We love taxes. We love us taxes. Taxes more, taxes more. Even though I admire Councilwoman Han, you picked an unfair way to fund the gang tax. Everyone must contribute, or no one. This gang tax is a parcel property tax, only hits homeowners. It will hurt me, my, hurt me. My rent will have to go up because my landlord can't afford... It's a problem. It's a dirty tax, and I don't believe we have a ceiling on this. We won't have any way to know it's being used properly. I'm against the Orange Line commercial development. It will ruin Van Nuys. Councilwoman Cardenius, stop this. Stop all the new taxes. City Council, MTA, don't have our interests at heart. Our half-cent sales tax will hurt buses that we use for rail projects. They want to take away the buses, make them take the subway, like you did the buses to downtown from the valley. I had a, I have to take a subway when I go down to you. You will do that with the subway to the sea. You don't have a clue on why you're... You don't want us, you don't need us, you feel like we're wasting two minutes of your time. And anyway, I want to tell the folks that the city council is not out for your own interest. They'll only hear their own voice. They don't hear the voice of the people out here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearman. That does close a public comment. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number one, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Yes, I think we're still holding that one on the desk, so if we could go to the next item.
Next item then would be item number 16, and I believe that was Councilmember Perry on that one.
I think actually, we were trying to, let's hold that on the desk for a moment on item 16 and go to the next item.
Then, item number 22, I understand is still being held on the desk. Next item would be number 23.
Yes. Mr. Zuma Dog on item number 23.
I'll pass on this one.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 23, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. I believe on item 16, I think the council members are ready to vote on this item. We wanted to make sure if anyone wanted to call it special. If not so, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 16, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. That item has now been approved. Next item?
Next item is item number 25, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Mr. Zuma Dog on item number 25?
Yes, I'll take a minute for this, and if I could please ask city council members not to jump up and start shouting and violating my Brown Act. That's a nice way to start.
Ms. Zuma Dog, please, just continue.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this is relating to various funds transferred to expedite construction of parking lots, okay? Now, the city has a lot of parking lots that they need to build, and of course, everyone's for parking lots. But the problem is, you need to stop building density housing. That's the problem. Okay, you cannot parking lot your way out of this. And the only answer is no more density. See, the City of Los Angeles has a build-it-and-they-will-come mentality. They're expecting 4 million people, and when I say people, I mean people from another country coming to this country over the next 10 years or whatever. And the City of Los Angeles feels they want to build all the accommodations for every immigrant, all 4 million people coming to the region. Well, let's just make it right here, Los Angeles. Let's just make the accommodations for all of them. And that way, we can build this parking lot, and then we can staff it, and we can make a lot of money for the people building it. But I'm here to say you can't build your way out of this, and I don't know why the City of Los Angeles feels it is their requirement and civic duty to provide housing, and parking lots, and social services, and schooling, and fire services, and police services for everybody that wants to come to the state. You don't have enough room on the roads. You don't have enough mass transit. You admit that. You're gonna, we're very, very screwed with density, and you want to build parking lots. You can't build enough parking lots. So again, I'm here to say that this is a lot of money that's going to be spent because construction interests make money to build things. And then, you have to spend money to staff it. And then people put all their, it's called front-end-loaded patronage crony management contracts, and here's another excuse to run one. Stop building the density. You don't have parking, you don't have infrastructure, you don't have schools, police, fire, trash removal, you don't have anything, y'all.
Thank you. And Mr. Zuma Dog, please do not, as we've indicated, to yell into the microphone. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We would like to hold this at the desk to work out a few fine points on this issue. This is an amazing moment, I got to tell you. On Abbott Kenny and the back of it, there are over 100 parking spots. Many of them have been encroached over the last 20, 30 years. What we're going to be doing, actually, on August the 14th, is start a process to make all of these parking spaces available for people. I'm thrilled about it, and I look forward to doing it, but I want to hold it at the desk to find, tune a few issues.
Thank you. We'll hold it on the desk. So you don't want to continue it, you just want to hold it during this council meeting?
Yeah, just hold it on the desk.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item number 26, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Mr. Zuma Dog on item number 26?
I'll take one minute, because this is very important. See, what happens here, they cram like eight times the amount of business you should in one day, and I only get a few minutes, and then I have to pick, do I care about the kids or the fires or, you know? So anyway, this is about the police report. There's a police update. And what I'd like to ask city council, please ask for more training citywide, including with the police department, okay? Especially regarding Prop 215, medical marijuana. That's something that's very important to the city, and what's happening is medication is being taken away from patients who need it most, not because they are in violation of city law, not because they have done anything wrong, but because the LAPD has not been trained and updated with a lot of new rules and regulations. So it's no disrespect to LAPD, it's to the people on top. It's not like they have a big session at Staples Center where all 10,000 cops are there, and they go over all the new codes, rules, and ordinances. So please, more education or retraining, especially regarding Prop 215. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Madam President, I was stepped at just a moment ago when we passed 16. I'd like to ask for reconsideration, because there's an amendment the Bureau of Sanitation is proposing I'd like to propose.
Okay.
16 reconsideration.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration on item 16, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. We were proposing that we change item B on the report to match what the County of LA is doing. And on the state law, the current proposal that we just passed was that 25 cents is 5 cents going to retailers, 5 cents going to the state, 15 cents to the local government. Under the county's proposal, which we were proposing we match, it would change it to 25 cents, 3% to the retailers, 3% to the state, and 94% to the local jurisdiction. So the City of LA would recoup more of this than under the current plan. It is what the County of LA is doing, and I think we ought to match what the county is doing besides giving us more revenue. So I'm proposing that amendment, and it still goes forward with all the plan as proposed.
Is there a second on that amendment? Mr. Okay, thank you. Mr. Cardenius? And then, Mr. Cardenius, the city attorneys advise that if there, we would need to reopen the public comment, comment cards if they have comments on the amendment. The public comments have been heard in the past. Mr. Cardenius, you can go ahead and speak, so...
We're free to speak on the item itself, not just the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to applaud the effort of our increasing our ability to reduce our carbon footprint as a city. We're the second-largest city in the country. I think a lot of communities, cities, counties are going to look at our actions. But at the same time, I want to make sure that people understand that sometimes what meets the eye is not better for us than what we assume is good for us. Let me give you an example. Polystyrene, right now, is recyclable within our blue bins here in the City of Los Angeles. Yet at the same time, some people feel really good about having what looks like a paper cup, yet at the same time, that paper cup has a polystyrene lining on the inside, and that paper cup is not truly recyclable. Right now, no one is recycling those kinds of cups today that we're aware of. I'd like to ask the staff from the department to come forward and please confirm whether or not that statement is true about polystyrene, simple polystyrene cups or containers, for example, that do not have other combinations thereof of paper or other products attached to them. Are they recyclable today as we speak?
Good morning. Neil Guglielmo, Bureau of Sanitation, Recycling Division. As the councilman indicated, yes, there are products we can recycle right now in the blue bin with our residents in the City of Los Angeles. Polystyrene, which is number six for plastics, and expanded polystyrene or foam polystyrene can be recycled if it's clean in our blue bin recycling stream. Paper can be recycled as well. However, paper products that have both a paper, say, a cup lined with plastic liner on the inside, cannot be recycled as their two materials are together. Very costly to separate the materials out to recycle them.
So right now, we're, the City of Los Angeles is not aware of any organization, public or private, that is actually recycling that kind of product?
No, those hybrid products, right now, we're not aware of the recycling taking place, just because of the cost that will be involved.
But a simple, ugly, white, unsightly-looking styrofoam cup is fully recyclable today?
They can be recycled in the blue bin, yes. Of course, we always encourage our residents to place all clean materials in the blue bin, whether it be plastic or paper or some such, so it can be properly recycled.
Well, the thing is, you actually touched on something. It's about the human element. Most of the time, what happens when it comes to the lack of recycling, or the reason why we're doing such a bad job with our environment, or we see so much litter in our streams and rivers, or out in the ocean, or what have you, it's usually because human beings, in their ignorance and their lack of respect for the environment, end up putting this stuff out there on the streets, or dumping it, or allowing it to get into that kind of system, rather than putting it where it belongs, which is in some type of receptacle, so it goes to where it belongs and possibly could be recycled, or put in a landfill, wherever it ends up being. So the reason why I point that out is because unfortunately, during some of the testimony and some of the committees, for example, the City of Santa Monica was being talked about as though they're doing something wonderful and phenomenal and incredible, and their recycling implementation in their city is just awesome. Well, the fact of the matter is, I asked the staff, and not your fault, I said, "Well, let's see what Santa Monica is doing. What are they reporting back to themselves about their own system?" And the fact of the matter is, they're not reporting to themselves. They're not gathering the information. They're not even proving to themselves that what they tried to implement in Santa Monica is actually doing anything better for the environment or worse for the environment. They don't know. So the reason why I point that out, ladies and gentlemen, is because I think that we're stepping in the right direction in this city, but I think we ought to do better than the City of Santa Monica. I think we ought to do better for our constituents and the environment, that we should know what we're doing, understand why we're doing what we're doing, and understand how it's going to make things better. The biggest problem that I have right now with this, this motion, is the fact of the matter is that we haven't done enough of what we should do to do it right. Fortunately, the first implementation of this will be on July 1st of '09. So what I'd like to propose is that if it's not in here already, that we have some rigorous reporting to the city council via our departments that are participating in this, and let us know at least quarterly between now and July 1st of 2009, and report quarterly there every quarter after what we're doing well. Let's be honest with ourselves and say what doesn't seem to be working, and things of that nature. Because the fact of the matter is, when you look at any counter, we have a counter back here with some cups on it. We got rid of our styrofoam cups, but now what we have is the polystyrene-lined paper cups, just like what Councilmember Smith is holding up. That item is not recyclable. But that ugly, symbolic styrofoam cup is fully recyclable, and we got rid of it. To me, that's dumb. To me, that's not good policy. To me, that's backwards policy. Let's hope that by July 1st, 2009, a year from now, we actually do better than the City of Santa Monica. So where we just don't symbolically pass something, we go ahead and actually do it. We are honest with ourselves, we're honest with the public, and we let them know what's working, what's not. We learn from it and make it a better system than what is being reported to us. I'm sick and tired of people going around saying, "Well, this city has done it," or "that county has done it," and then we ask for the information, they have no information to back it up, that it is actually working. That's the problem that I have with this motion. Thank God we're not implementing anything until July 1st of next year. I would love to see our rivers and our waste streams just no longer have this litter in them. I'd love to see more things get recycled, but the fact of the matter is, we're not ready to do more today, and thank God this motion doesn't implement anything until July 1st of next year.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes, the original maker of the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Your colleagues, this discussion started back in 2001. Our office, other offices, have been working with the plastic bag industry for six, seven years now. So this not hap, did not happen overnight. So I appreciate the discussion. We have been trying very hard to work with all the different sectors that are involved with this process. We've had monthly meetings, we've had partnerships, but we've gotten to a point where we need to act as a city where we can have real results. Now, we're trying to do it in a way in which we can educate and inform the public of what we're doing, but many habits are hard to break. Plastic bags for the different economic groups of this city has a different role. For some, it's something as basic as taking your goods from your car, from the store to the car to your home. For others, it's a form of packaging. For others, it's their baggage. For others, it has played a significant role in our lives. So it's going to take time to change. I thank you for your vote. I believe it's passed the council, but we have an amendment that really is just very basic. It simplifies the process. I appreciate Councilmember Smith's recommendation, because it lines up the jurisdiction and how we deal with, dealing with, with the impact of the fees, and how it gets distributed, if I'm correct, and hopefully, Councilmember Smith can articulate more. But colleagues, I just ask you that we be opportunistic in making this an educational process, that we actually have the city family in dealing with the polystyrene food packaging products, to ban those in the areas that we can control immediately. Understand what the infrastructure could be like, so that we can implement efficiently. So I thank you for this debate. I think the public should know more about the proactivity of this council. With your guidance and your support in your respective districts, we could make an impact at the street level. Perhaps we can see less trash in our curbs and our gutters, and in the wintertime, not have all of our flora and fauna, our natural ecosystems polluted, contaminated, and being punished by the plastic bags that hang everywhere around our river systems. If you go to Long Beach, it's worse there. At the mouth where the ocean begins, you will see a flood, I mean, a whole layer of white foam caused by plastic, caused by the styrofoam, the polystyrene. So we need to think of our grandchildren. This is a one step of many steps we need to take, so I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much, and I commend Mr. Reyes for, again, starting this discussion seven years ago. We've been dealing with this issue. Things have changed in that timeframe. Things have changed a lot. Mr. Reyes and I, along with Mr. Rosendahl, appeared before our SWR meeting a few months ago at the Convention Center. 600 citizens of Los Angeles showed up on a Saturday morning to talk about trash. That is a phenomenal statement of involvement, and we heard overwhelmingly, every one of us did, they want this bill done. They want to see styrofoam out of the waste stream, they want the plastic bags out of the waste stream. As Mr. Reyes said, you can see an ocean of floating white crud near our harbor anytime you go down and look. We need to do something about that, and this is an opportunity to do that. And so I commend both my colleagues, Mr. Rosendahl, who helped get this discussion going again, and Mr. Reyes, who started the whole discussion and bring this forward. I want to report to you what I just saw in Tel Aviv, Israel, a few weeks ago. As you know, the City of LA is looking at RFPs to build alternative trash-to-energy plants. One of the ones we saw called Aerobio is in the high mix of alternative technologies, new technologies, that can take this cup that is your concern, and a rightful concern, and use it. It takes it through putting it in the water instead of burning it, which is a big problem for many environmentalists. It submerges our trash, separates the trash, all the heavy stuff drops to the bottom, the light stuff floats to the top. Then this goes through what they call a hydrocrusher, very strong water stream that scrips off the paper, and takes the plastic, sends it to recycling, takes the paper and puts it in a pulp that is used for compost. I think the City of LA later this year will have before it, this council will have before it, an option to build one of those plants. It is a very vibrant proposal, very unique in the world. Australia just built a second facility. I hope we build a third, but it is the answer to that question. Also, when we saw it when we were in Japan, McDonald's there do not stir, use polystyrene. The clam shells are made, the hamburgers come in, are made out of paper, all of which is usable. They use paper cups. They do not use polystyrene anywhere in Japan, in McDonald's, or any other fast-food facilities. Even though it creates a high BTU, which they burn, they chose not to do that. And so I think we can follow the examples that have been created around the world that are better. I think we will have a technology right here in Los Angeles that will be the first in America that can take and treat these properly, and I think we will have an answer on stream very shortly. For the short term, this is a long-term proposal Mr. Reyes has brought forward, and I think that's the value. It doesn't say tomorrow morning, stop. It says, "We're going to phase into this." Finally, I've been using those carry-on bags that are made out of recycled PET. Those bags in the markets are the best option. For one, they last a long time. For two, you put more stuff in them. And three, you don't ever, it's all renewable. You don't waste anything in the waste stream. And so I think these solutions that have been brought forward are the best solution for Los Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen, we are recognized in the United States of America as the leaders in environmental treatment of our trash and our waste stream. We are leading the United States of America in almost every category. And I'm very proud of what we've accomplished here. This is the next step, the next generation, and I think we need to pass this bill and move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to ask for a verbal amendment and a friendly motion, just ask that as this report comes back, that we're advised as to what are the proposed products that will replace plastic and polystyrene, and what the potential cost differential is, and then also if we can include information about an education training program, because without that, the next anti-litter program will be a new product. And so we'd like to see those two items added as a friendly amendment.
You're fine with that, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. Several things I want to say. First, I want to let everybody realize that we've reached the age where we have to get away from plastic and go to canvas. It's not easy for me, to be candid about it. I put three or four of these in the back of my car, and when I get to the supermarket, I forget it, I go back out, and I get them. And over the last couple of three months, really thanks to Alex Fay, my environmental deputy, I'm a guilty guy, I always feel guilty about things, I just would go back to the car and get them. So now, I'm pretty well-trained to go to this rather than my plastic bags. And I also want to say Whole Foods, and I know we have political issues with Whole Foods, but they got rid of their plastic bags, and they taped the paper bag, and they give me a 5-cent credit when I walk in with this or give it to a charity. So this is simple, but I'm a simple guy. I even go through my garbage to make sure we start separating everything into the blue bin. I put blue bins up on Venice Beach. Millions of people go there, where you can actually separate. I've done it in the Palisades. I'm doing it on San Vicente in Brentwood, and I think every public space in the city should have that blue bin. And so we must look at ourselves, look at our air, look at our lives, and, and change our habits. You know, the Biona Creek is in my district, and to see the styrofoam stuff, and to see the plastic, and to see the fish, and to see all of that, we know it's wrong, we just have to get out of it. This is a slow-step process here that works. Quickly, tell us exactly what we're voting on.
Yes, Councilman. What you're voting on this morning would be a city facilities and city events ban on the use of the EPS food services products. There's a number of items related to that ban, as well as the instruction to the Department of General Services and sanitation to report back to the council. In the report, initial recommendations was annually, we've also heard quarterly to the council and the mayor's office on the status of those efforts, what our findings are, the use of alternative products, what some cost implications are, availability of alternative products, all those things, so that when we come back to the council, you have the information to look at what things you would like to do regarding policy. We also, in the recommendations, have a citywide ban on the use of plastic carryout bags at all supermarkets and retail establishments beginning January 1st of 2012 if a fee has not been established by that time. And there is a movement at the state level to impose a 25-cent fee per bag fee on plastic bags.
And when they've done that in other states, it's been very effective and around the world, right?
Yes. As a matter of fact, in our report, we did a number of case studies, looking at other jurisdictions within California, other states, and internationally as well. Of course, we find that the best solution to a bag problem is reusable bags. As you mentioned, the canvas bags, reusable bags, is the best solution for a number of reasons. So that recommendation is also in there. And the council has already taken an action back in April to support that state legislation, AB 2058, and we have some recommendations that would, I think, further strengthen that bill in terms of the effects to local government. And we've discussed that, but we're looking at, rather than having diversion targets, imposing a fee on the bags and then looking at a per capita breakdown for the funding formula to come back to local jurisdictions to do programs. And those are really the recommendations we have before you today.
And I certainly appreciate that, and I appreciate Mr. Cardenas' comments about phasing it in, working overtime, getting things organized. You know, I'm in a unique spot. My seatmate on my left is a moderate Republican. My seatmate on my right is a Democrat liberal, okay? So when you find both sides agreeing on a policy, we know it's a good thing, okay? And I know there's a little mumbling going on when I said that, but let me ask you if we can do this, because I saw what the House of Representatives is doing. Nancy Pelosi took leadership. They banned all that stuff in their cafeterias. They're setting a model for the whole nation of what they've done already. I'd like you to take my LAX, which is in my district, it's everybody's airport, and the question is, LAX has a lot of food service concessions. Will those operations be part of this ban on expanded polyethylene?
Yes, they would. It would be all city facilities, including proprietary departments as well. There's a specific instruction regarding the proprietaries, and we've already had those discussions with LAX, with liberal airports, recreation and parks, the harbor department, and others that have food concessions.
Good. And then how can we assure that new materials that we use instead of polyester, and I can't even pronounce it right, will be more eco-friendly alternatives? I mean, we don't want to replace one bad thing with something else.
And that's a really good point, is that, and we hear that from a lot of our stakeholders, is that what are the unintended consequences? If you ban one product, what are the consequences of the alternative products? And that's actually part of our reporting back. We'll be looking at all those alternative products, availability and their impacts.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, colleagues, we want to become the greenest city in the world. This is a step in that direction. This is another threshold that we're meeting. When I did the Shell station on hydrogen, that was a major moment. This is a major moment for our city to bite the bullet and go forward with what is more ecologically sensitive than what we've ever done before. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon?
Members, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things about the committee report. First of all, the recommendation is to support, but the language is not consistent with the language that we used in the legislature. It says, "Support Assembly Bill 2058 with the proposed amendments." The language used in the legislature is "support if amended." Is that what we are doing?
Well, the city has already taken a support position on the bill on AB 205. They baked council action back on April 11th and American Currents. I mean, I would bow to the CLA's recommendation.
I'm not talking about what we did in the past, I'm talking about what this instructs us to do. I'm reading this to say we support if amended, which means we are not in support of the bill unless it's amended.
I would defer to the CLA's office for the specific language regarding bill instructions.
The guru.
Mr. Alacon, I think in this situation, it's support but seek amendments. So obviously, it's up to the council, but you are on record supporting the bill as is, so the action here would be to continue to support the bill but seek amendments as well.
Okay, then I would recommend a minor amendment to state, to change the language with the proposed amendments as follows. To be clear, that we still support the bill, but we recommend the following amendments. The amendments are significant, folks. I don't believe that Mr. Levine, frankly, can get the bill signed by Governor Schwarzenegger with the amendments that are proposed. Nevertheless, a second, the secondary option to get the 70% diversion rate is a positive thing, and I don't think we should eliminate that just because we wanted the 25-cent fee. So I think that's very critical. I also wanted to ask regarding one H in the report where we, the ban of plastic carryout bags at supermarkets and retail establishment begins January 1st, 2012. That's a long time from now. What are we going to do in between? What are we going to do in between? Because that's assuming that Mr. Levine's bill does not get signed, then we impose a ban three years from now. Well, actually, four years from now.
Correct. The date that was used coincides with AB 2449, which was enacted into state law previously, was a previous Levine bill that preempted local governments from imposing a fee on single-use plastic bags. And so what we're looking at is the city would have taken a position to support a ban if there's no fee in place. What we'd like to see is obviously the state taking action this year to, through AB 2058 or perhaps another bill, that would amend the current state language via 2449, that would allow a fee be imposed on the single-use plastic bags and hopefully other carryout single-use bags as well.
Okay, that's a good explanation, but you didn't get to the heart of the first question, which was, why 2012? We can impose the ban now.
That is correct. Other jurisdictions, because of the state preemption on the fee, have decided to impose a ban, and several examples, Safe Santa Monica is one of those. Other jurisdictions such as the city of Malibu have imposed a ban on the plastic bags and recommended imposing a fee on the paper bags so that you don't see one replacement single-use product with another single-use product that has other problems.
I'm still not getting an answer to my question. Why are we waiting till 2012 for the ban? There's nothing in state law that prohibits us from imposing a ban, and you're saying we'll impose the ban if they don't create a fee. That's essentially what we're doing. But why are we waiting till 2012? They're more likely to create a fee if we impose the ban immediately.
Yes, we could always, the council could act to have that date moved up to a different year, a different date. Of course, with the city of Los Angeles, Bureau of Sanitation, our efforts on the education and stakeholder involvement as well.
Yeah, but four years, we'll be out of office. Is that what the goal was? What I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Reyes, why wait till 2012? Why can't we create the ban next year, put real pressure on the legislature, and have a year to educate?
I'm fine with that. Quite frankly, 2012 was based on all the state politics that were going on. The feedback we were getting around this horseshoe was, we probably would not get to eight if we did not have an infrastructure in place, if we did not have the ability to educate our communities, if we did not have the ability for the various stores and markets, because it has an economic impact throughout the spectrum of different service providers. But if I had it my way, I'd do it tomorrow. But bottom line is, after these years of working this process, we've been informed by all the different sectors, all the reasons why we should promote this in a way that is going to be implementable. And I can sound great for the newspapers and television and say, I want it today, but the fact is, I want something that can be implemented. And to implement it, we need an infrastructure. To get an infrastructure, we need time. If you read the executive summary on page two, you will see some very clear directives on what the city needs to do, what we're trying to do to inform the public and inform the business sector so that they can become partners, not get caught up in lawsuits in court and end up doing nothing. So we wanted to be pragmatic and implement. That is the goal.
Okay, on my time, I have no problem, I have no problem.
Your time was held, Mr. Alacon.
No, well, you're supposed to be holding my time.
I did hold your time.
But I didn't speak for two minutes?
You have 20 seconds. Yes, you did. You spoke for two minutes and 80 seconds, I mean, excuse me, 40 seconds. You want to continue? We have more time. Okay. Mr. Labange?
Labange. Like you did in the...
Pick your stuff up. It's no fun. The only thing that's good with plastic bag, truly, the absolutely only thing good, the only people who would support it is animal services, because a plastic bag is real good at picking up one thing, okay? The truth, the truth, it's the truth if any of you do that. All that being said is, they're going to make special plastic bags to deal with that. So the time has come to get rid of these bags. And remember before, Ms. Hahn, remember when we would go to the market and it would be small markets? I got it right here, Billy, I'm prepared. Give Mr. Rosendahl a big hand right there for two bags. Okay. He doesn't like it. He doesn't like it. Look at the thick guy, he doesn't like it. I think it's key that we ban these, because what happens? Even when they're in our own blue containers, when they go up to dump in the truck, sometimes they fly away. They fly away and they find themselves in a drain. They get in the drain, and when it rains, which it sometimes does in Los Angeles, it goes down the drain. When it goes down the drain, it goes down the Los Angeles River. And I just want to apologize to the city of Long Beach and everyone else who takes much of our debris because of this. Mr. Reyes, continued leadership. I thank you, Mr. Smith. I thank you for your leadership. The time has come to act, and people will change. They have before. Vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Wow. It's a hard act to follow. It's a hard act to follow. Okay, yeah, I was kind of excited today because I actually thought what we were doing was casting a vote to get these plastic bags out of our waste stream. I mean, I think you articulated it very well, Councilmember Smith, that we've heard from, you know, a lot of people, a lot of stakeholders who want plastic bags out of the waste stream. But the more I'm listening to our discussion this morning, it sounds like that's not what we're doing. We're actually saying in 2012, we would begin to ban them if there had not been a fee instituted by the state legislator. My question is, what if that fee is imposed? What does that mean? Hold my time.
Okay, that's an excellent question. What we found, and look at the case studies from their cities and jurisdictions, is that when the fees are imposed, there's a significant reduction in the usage of the single-use plastic bags. Because what...
So even if the fee is imposed, we're not banning the bags. We're expecting that because of the fee, people will use them less.
That's correct, and that's what we've seen in other countries, in other cities as well. Once a fee is imposed, there's utility for the plastic bags, which is, we would hope that people would bring their reusable bags with them to the supermarkets and retail establishments, but it's not, I mean, it's not fair to say that people will always have those reusable bags with them. And so there are going to be, there's going to be a need still for a single-use bag alternative. We prefer to see a fee on the plastic bags and all single-use bags with really the emphasis on the reusable bags. Those are by far the best solution for so many reasons. But you're right, we think by imposing the fee, we're going to see a significant reduction in the use of those bags.
Right, and I think that's, you know, my biggest disappointment today, because I think we're hearing great speeches about getting these plastic bags out of our waste stream. I know, I've been working on trash issues since 1990, and we knew then that, you know, plastic is, while it may be recyclable, we know that if plastic gets into our landfills, our oceans, it virtually does not break down and it causes enormous problems. So this is also kind of a land use issue. We know, I know in the 90s, the statistic that always floored me was that L.A. County generates enough trash in nine days to fill the Coliseum. I mean, that's just an amazing visual. And it's probably more than that now, but it's a problem today, and I think you'd have the support, colleagues, to actually move quicker on banning plastic bags from our waste stream. I know I represent a part of the city that has Cabrillo Beach, and I know that we see these plastic bags also down there on the beach in the ocean. We're basically endangering, we know, the wildlife that is in our oceans if they get caught in these plastic bags. So I think a fee is a good idea in four years, but I think, as Tom said, people will change. People's habits and behaviors will change, but we know that they change if we have outright bans on particular products. So I can see Ed trying to talk, but I'll tell you, when I sing "God Bless America," and you get to the refrain that says, "From the mountains to the prairies to the oceans white with foam," it has a very different feeling for me, because I've seen that foam in our oceans, and sometimes that foam is made up of crud and trash and dirt and styrofoam and plastic bags. So I'd love to hear what you have to say, but I think you have support today from us to not wait until 2012 and ban it only if there is a fee, because even if the fee's imposed, it doesn't get us where we want to get. Okay, speak to me, Ed.
Let me ask one question, and I'd like to make an amendment. I believe Councilmember Smith will second.
Okay.
Can we implement and phase this in with a ban on 2010?
Yes.
Instead of waiting to 2012? Do you think we can do that?
Yes, I think we can.
That being said...
Second it.
Okay, we got two seconds.
Second.
So we can ban instead of 2012, 2010, as long as we can make that happen?
You have our support.
Thank you, thank you.
You have our support.
Mr. Weisar?
That's your friendly amendment, 2010.
2010.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much.
And we'll have Mr. Weisar, Mr. Cardenas, and then we do have, we're going to have a public comment before we go to people who have their second time to speak.
This is a, before my time starts, a point of clarification, but that is just suggested language for support of the bill in the state legislature, correct?
No.
Our city action is for polystyrene, it's plastic bags for the state legislation.
Recommendation number one, item H, is the adopted citywide policy ban the use of plastic carryout bags at all supermarkets and retail establishments beginning January 1st, 2012, or 2010 in this case, if a fee has not been established by that time, and then imposing a point-of-sale fee on all other single-use bags such as paper or compostable bags if a fee or tax for use has not been adopted by the state.
So for polystyrene, we are doing a ban that will take effect when?
Well, that's a phased-in ban regarding all city departments. We're looking at July of 2008 with implementation for some of the city permitted events by July of 2009, as well as the phased-in approach for leasing concession agreements, because we have leasing concession agreements for numerous city departments.
And so we will do a ban on plastic bags at the city level by 2010?
That would be, yes, that would be the revised recommendation, H, yes.
Okay, good. And I think, I do think that's a better approach than doing the fee, because the fee, we're waiting, and San Francisco actually did a straight-out ban, and I'm very interested to see what San Francisco did and the results they have. So I'd also like to put in a verbal amendment that we get a report back from the CAO and CLA in conjunction with the Bureau here on the results from what San Francisco did after banning plastic bags. And I actually like banning the plastic bags, because that's more direct to what our ultimate goal is, which is to get them out of our waterways and to get them out of our landfills. If we impose a fee, not only does the market have to adjust to that, but you also have an indirect impact on low-income people, who many of us may say 25 cents is not a lot of money, but actually, by the time they are informed and learn about this imposition, they're spending probably $5 more each time they visit their supermarket or wherever they go shopping. And for many of us, some of us, that might not seem a lot, but believe me, in my neighborhood where I live and I go to my local shop in Boa Heights, that $5 means a lot these days, given the cost of living that's going up. In fact, in one month, it went up 1%, something we haven't seen in a long time. So certainly, an outright ban gets us more direct to what our goal is and doesn't unfairly impose on low-income people until they get informed and educated, and that would take some time. So this is, I think we're on the right path, but I do think we need to be informed by San Francisco, and I haven't seen us do that research yet internally. I've seen newspaper reports, but I would love to see a full report on how San Francisco went about it, what are the results, what can we learn from it, what can we do better? And the outright ban is certainly a better route to take than to do the fee.
We'll definitely do that.
Thank you. And Ms. Cardenas, before we go to you, we're going to go to our public comment period. So we're going to ask for each speaker, because it was a public hearing, it was asked, it would be a one minute per individual, so I'll call up the first four names. Kirsten, excuse me, Kirsten James, Barbara Monahan Burke, Jennifer Forkush, and Michael Westfield.
Good morning. My name is Kirsten James, and I'm the Water Quality Director at Heal the Bay. We commend the council for taking up this important issue of plastic bags and EPS and the environment. Obviously, for anyone who's gone to the L.A. River after a storm event or the beach, they know the magnitude of this problem. know the magnitude of this problem. In general, we strongly support the Bureau of Sanitation's recommendations and the amendments proposed today by Councilmembers Smith and Reyes. As a proud sponsor of AB 2058, I can just clarify that the proposed amendment that makes the ban in place in 2010 corresponds very nicely with the way 2058 is written now because 2058 would have, we would know by 2010 if a fee were going to be in place or not. So that's a very great amendment that we strongly support. Um, just a couple of things we wanted to clear up that have been misconceptions here today. One is the issue of, um, of low-income communities, and we've heard this issue a lot, and there are, um, can I have 10 more seconds?
If you could just conclude, yes.
Okay, just a couple of things to note. There is no free bag. Those costs are put into the food prices. So things like the city-sponsored Day Without a Bag in conjunction with Heal the Bay where we gave 10,000 bags out, and I know there was a subsequent one that gave 50,000 bags out, those kinds of things will take care of that problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Barbara Monahan Burke?
Barbara Monahan Burke, 4223 Wilkinson Avenue, Studio City, uh, member of the Studio City Neighbor Council Board. And I'm here speaking personally. We didn't have time to do a CIS with the notice. I do personally support and from what I've seen in our community, totally, um, the proposals you're going forward with and as soon as possible. I just would like to, um, put out something I requested, um, to the Ad Hoc River Committee. It's just a short little bit. The workers, um, I request you consider, um, a companion ordinance. Um, the workers and industries in LA who now make the products to be banned will be affected adversely by this proposal. I think they should be retrained and retooled with the help of LA City so that we can retain our vital industrial economic base and also support our local resident workforce. So I would like that to be considered. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you very much. Jennifer Forkush, followed by Michael Westfield, followed by Anatolio Riejos, followed by Juan Tovar. Jennifer? Some of these may have left because as you, Jennifer Forkush? No? Okay. Thank you. Michael?
Yes. I'm Michael Westfield. I work for Dart Container. We manufacture single-use food service containers, um, like this foam cup right here. And McDonald's was mentioned, and McDonald's, places like that that use these cups that aren't recyclable actually result in more waste because you don't have an option to throw this in the recycle bin, you have to throw it in the trash can. This foam cup, if they'd use this, it can go in the recycle, recycle bin. The bins that are set up at the beach will accept this foam cup. They won't accept this. This winds up as waste. Because these cups don't work as well as foam cups, um, they also take, it takes more products so you wind up with even more waste in the waste stream. I dug in the trash can across the way here yesterday. I found paper cups like this wrapped in napkins because they don't insulate. I didn't find any napkins wrapped around foam cups. I also found hot cups that were double-cups, just like this, or they had a Java jacket on it. Again, you're going to wind up with more waste in the waste stream, more waste going to the landfill. Responsible people that choose to recycle this right now can do so. Responsible people that use a paper cup can't. Foam cups are going to, if you ban foam cups, you're going to recycle less and have more waste and more litter. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Anatolio Riejos, and I work at a plastic company. I've been, I just celebrated 30 years of service at that company. And I'm involved in the environmental waste that we use in our plant, and I know you are aware that in plastic, 95% or more is recyclable. And, and it's not only that, when we start banning things and start closing factories, where we as a, uh, work, uh, blue collar workers, we're going to go. To my, to, every time, everybody talks about this, about that, but nobody talks about the people who make those plastic bags, the people who have families to support. We have the situation, I'm, I'm one of the luckiest men. My, in my job, I was able to put my children to college because I work with a union, USC, U of C WU. And if we keep closing this and doing that, don't forget the people who, who will be affected more than, than what's going on. We have to take care of our people too. Don't, don't forget about that, the people who have to make a living working.
Thank you. Juan Tovar, followed by Jonathan Parvay, followed by Jeanne Clark.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Juan. I'm an HR manager for the facility that Tony just spoke about. Just a little background on the facility. Uh, most of the people that actually work there, we have about 300 employees, do reside and live within the city of Los Angeles. The average tenure there is about 13.5 years. The average wage is about $15.95 per hour. 60% of our employees are over 45 years old. These are good manufacturing jobs within the city, within a unionized environment that provides a lot for the, for these folks. On a second point, I consider myself an environmental, um, you know, aware kind of person. Our household, we recycle everything that we can, you know, up to the point where we don't use plastic bags and we drive four-cylinder vehicles. But my question really here is, I think the, the distinction is not being made between what is a plastic bag and polystyrene. I think they're two separate issues and they should be approached separately. Because polystyrene, when you turn anything around, any cup, you'll see a code down there that goes 1 through 6, and all of those items are recyclable. And to your point, Ms. Reyes, uh, I think there's more education that needs to be done on what we need to do to recycle those products that are already there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jonathan, followed by Jeanne Clark, and then we'll go out to the San Fernando Valley for Aaron Green.
Jonathan Parvay, Green Los Angeles Coalition, representing over 100 environmental organizations in Los Angeles. Uh, we wish to applaud the motion and the work of this council and their good amendments. Uh, we ask that you consider ways to track it, to ensure that we meet the benchmarks that are being set forward. Just wanted to also draw your attention to Los Angeles Times today had a very fine editorial in support of the motion. And I do want to bring to your attention that there's some claims that have been made here earlier that paper cups are not recyclable. They are indeed recyclable. There is a vibrant market for that. And that plastic bags are oftentimes made out of petroleum products. And I think in this day and age, we all know that we have to move away from petroleum. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Clark?
I'm here on behalf of Pactiv Corporation. Pactiv's a food service packaging company. We manufacture products in plastic as well as paper, aluminum, and compostables. We have eight manufacturing facilities in California, five in Southern California. We do not think that eliminating one of the more effective materials makes sense economically, environmentally, or socially. We believe the goals of this committee are to reduce litter, increase solid waste diversion, and be generally more environmentally friendly. There is no evidence in the staff report or with the current bans that these goals will be achieved with the current agenda. Banning polystyrene foam does not reduce litter. It exchanges one form of packaging for another, and as said previously, can increase the amount of packaging used. Increased diversion of solid waste occurs only when the waste is taken out of the solid waste stream. The city's facilities' waste stream will not change unless a significant program is implemented. Um, in conclusion, we also ask that you do not give up on recycling and instruct your staff to work with the industry and companies like mine to identify recycling opportunities for expanded polystyrene foam and other materials.
Thank you. If I could just ask you to conclude.
The market and need for post-consumers is growing.
Thank you very much. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley. I'm not sure if Aaron Green is still out there.
I'm here by myself. There's no Aaron Green.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, then we'll go to David Martinez, Greg Whiten, and Sheri Boone. Mr. Martinez?
Good morning. My name is David Martinez. I work for Pactiv Corporation. I, uh, work out in La Mirada, California, which is in LA County. Uh, there's 100 workers in our facility. And, uh, like was said earlier, uh, the people's lives, you know, should be considered. Polystyrene is recyclable. I think I've heard it said here that, uh, it's education that we need to continue working on. Banning polystyrene doesn't, uh, I guess, isn't green. I mean, if it really is green, there's, there's paper products. It costs more to produce paper products than it does polystyrene products. Uh, it's a good food container. What are we going to replace it with, you know? But, uh, I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to give my opinion here and not to forget about the workers producing the products. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg Whiten, Sheri Boone, followed by Joe, I think it's Giever?
Good morning. My name is Greg Whitten. Um, I work at the Pactiv La Mirada facility as well. The number that comes to mind is 1,300 in the LA County area. 1,300 employees in that LA County area work for Pactiv, Pactiv being a packaging-based company. Not evil people, people who work to provide a product that's used in our environment, right? One thing we also need to understand is not only would these people be negatively impacted, right, without a viable solution, um, we keep thinking that paper-based products are a better solution, much like when in the mid-1980s, we went away from paper to plastic bags to begin with, right? When, when we think of Pactiv, Pactiv actually makes both. We make foam, we make paper, we make plastics. It takes a lot more energy, greenhouse gases, to make paper-based products than it does foam-based products. So the, the allegation that the environment is better off by, uh, eliminating foam-based products isn't necessarily true. The, the environmental impact of paper-based products is more significant than the foam-based products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Boone, followed by Joe Giever, followed by John Chervenka?
Good morning. My name is Sheri Boone. I'm with the Plastic Food Service Packaging Group, which is a division of the American Chemistry Council. As Councilmember Cardenas rightly stated, simply banning polystyrene in favor of other products changes the composition of your waste stream but doesn't solve the environmental problems. However, you don't need to just believe my words and say that. I just want to reiterate our offer to fund a third-party study that the city council, that you or your staff could direct, that would look at the true lifecycle analysis of any product that is on the market now that you replaced polystyrene with. So I just want to open that up for consideration to you and, and just reiterate that offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members. My name is Joe Giever. I'm the California Policy Coordinator for Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider's an international grassroots volunteer environmental organization. We support your motion as well as the clarifying language offered by Councilmen Smith and Reyes. I do this on behalf of our chapters around the North Pacific, from Japan to British Columbia to Mexico. Marine debris travels around the world. This ordinance is a prime example of the idea of thinking globally and acting globally. So like I said earlier, our members around the world, thank you and encourage your support for this motion. Thanks again.
Thank you. John Chervenka?
Uh, yes, uh, my name is John Chervenka, and I'm an independent packaging broker, and I sell wide variety of material, materials of packaging, food service packaging, whether it's a restaurant or hospital or any kind of institution. And in my travels, there still seems to be a, a big debate on what to do with, whether they're going to be in polystyrene, expanded polystyrene, or another type of material. And, uh, it seems to me that it doesn't matter what material gets sold, that restaurant operators still wants to get a chance to get something recycled. And there doesn't seem to be a great infrastructure for recycling any kind of material. Um, that's why I think it'd be important to, for us to develop ways to try to come up with ways, incineration or recycling programs. In addition, the restaurant industry is going through tremendous, uh, crisis, if you will, because of the increased costs and their head counts are down, they're not selling as much restaurant food to go. And this is just another, if you implement this, it's going to increase the cost of the operator for his cost of operation and could put tremendous burden on his ability to go ahead and serve the, the, his customers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That does close public comment. Uh, we're going to call Mr. Cardenas before you. Mr. Zine pushed his button since he's not spoken before he gets to jump the line.
One quick question.
No, no, I'm, I'm teasing, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Zine, your turn.
Oh, thank you. Just one quick question for Mr. City Attorney. Do we have to do a CEQA on this? Any other requirements? CEQA, do we have any other requirements that we have to follow for this particular process?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. CEQA? I know, I'm trying to find out if it's required or not. Well, I'm trying to find out if there is one. And if there isn't, if there isn't, then there isn't. Thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Alacone, and Mr. Rosenthal.
First, I want to, uh, thank Councilmember Reyes for working on this for so long. Sometimes it takes a long time to do things proper and better. Um, again, I, I really don't like it when we, as, as council members here, when I was in the legislature, when we take other people's information at face value and we don't look into it. Uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, a lot has gone into this. We're actually double-checking things, we're looking into things to try to figure out how Los Angeles can actually do something and do it right. Uh, one of the, uh, people commented from the public about, uh, acting. See, that's one of the problems that Americans have with politicians. Sometimes politicians are just actors. They act like they're actually getting something done, but really they're not. And the fact of the matter is, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Reyes because what we're forcing our staff to do and our city to do by, oh my gosh, delaying this beyond implementing it tomorrow, is that we're asking our staff to go ahead and, and do things right so that when we do implement the first phase in, in July 1st of 2009, we're actually doing something correct, which means we're hopefully in, actually improving the environment around us and globally. And then when we implement another phase in 2010, et cetera, that we're actually doing things right and that we're not just acting, but we're actually doing things that are supposed to improve the environment. So that's why it's really important for us to understand, that yes, sometimes things take a long time and sometimes we might get some tremendous headlines by saying, "The city of Los Angeles is the first big city to do X." But really, we didn't do anything but pass something on paper and we didn't even do something that's actually going to have the outcome that we fooled the public into thinking. So that's what, one thing I want to point out, that my objections earlier in reminding the public and ourselves that we have to be diligent about doing this right. And I believe that with the amendments that we put in today and also with all the work that's gone into it so far, we're actually doing something better than any other county or city has done in the past. Because they've got tremendous headlines, but when you look underneath the surface, you start to realize that they're really not following what they're doing, like Santa Monica. Santa Monica isn't even finding out what, whether or not what they did is even working or not. And I'll state that publicly on the record. People, officials in Santa Monica want to come and debate that with us. I look forward to it. Um, in addition to that, I think it's important for people to understand that when you do something like this, we're dealing with, unfortunately, human habits. Human habits. It's going to take education, it's going to take a change in infrastructure, and also as legislators, we need to understand, and rightfully so, the chairman of the Budget Committee is always constantly reminding us, "How are we going to fund this? There's going to have to be resources put into this if we're going to do it right." So with that amount of time and honesty from, from our staff and giving them the opportunity to be honest with us, we're going to be faced with critical decisions along the way to find the resources, to put it where it belongs, to change our infrastructure, to educate ourselves and the public, and we're going to have a better system for it. So once again, thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for not giving up and keeping going, and thank you for resisting trying to do this and implement it literally tomorrow. This is the right way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, colleagues, if, uh, you look at the report that's written by the, uh, our staff, you'll see that there's a lot of detail here that if you want to go to sleep at night, this is one way to do it. But it's a lot of specifics, a lot of articulation in terms of process and procedures. But I want to thank our Chair of the Energy Committee, Energy and Environment, John Perry, who's also worked with me on this, our respective staffs to get to this point, Enrique Saldivar, who's also worked with me on this, our respective staffs to get to this point, Enrique Saldivar, the Director of the Bureau, Lupe Vela, who's been very consistent in trying to bring in the details, and of course, our staff here that was making it happen. So listen forward to this, and then listen and make it happen. Thank you very much.
Great. And Mr. Reyes, we may have you at the end to give concluding remarks so we know exactly what we're doing on that. Mr. Alocón?
Members, I want to hone in on the report, Section 1H, because I think there are some unintended consequences here, or we set ourselves up for failure. I would never impose this immediately. I want to make that clear. I was just, I didn't think it would take a college education of four years for us to get us where we need to be. A two-year educational opportunity and transition for industry, I think, is responsible, and I would have, I was actually going to introduce that. But there is a problem I see here, and that is that this says that if the state imposes a fee, Mr. Reyes, the way this is written, it says that if the state imposes a fee, there is no ban. There is no clarifying language. It just says "a fee." It also says that there's a tax. I'm not worried about a tax, because that would require two-thirds of the voters. I don't think that's going to happen. But on the fee, if the state turned around and introduced legislation to increase, to create a fee of one penny, with no direction as to where the revenue is going to go, our ban goes away. So I'm recommending a friendly amendment that we say a fee of at least 25 cents to ensure that the state won't turn around, and Mr. Weston knows exactly what I'm talking about here, but turn around and create a fee of five cents, and the city of Los Angeles doesn't get anything. And we lose the ban. So I would recommend a friendly amendment to say that a fee of at least 25 cents. I don't know, we might want to have a little bit of sidebar about whether we want to include this other language about where that fee would be designated. Because we could end up with a fee of 25 cents that could go into the state's revenue fund, and I guarantee you that that 25 cent could be absorbed completely by just cleaning the beaches. And so we may want to, before voting on this thing, we may want to tighten the language about the fee to incorporate 2B into that language.
Mr. Reyes, or Mr. Smith?
Let Councilmember Smith respond to that, please.
And I would second the amendment, because I think we need to tighten it up, but just for your clarification, that was my motion earlier, did it, and that is specify where the money goes, and that is most of it is retained by the local government. So even if, I think what you want to do is say, "If the state legislature doesn't do this, we will continue to do this pursuant to the language I introduced," and then it's all fixed, I think.
Okay.
Well, I'm assuming that's 2B?
Yeah, 2B.
Okay, so what I would recommend is the friendly amendment that says if a fee, and we can work with the clerk on the language, but a fee of at least 25 cents, and use the exact same language as in 2B.
Yeah, incorporate the languages so they're the same and consistent, and then we're good.
We're created. And if the state legislature comes back and says, "Hey, we're not going to, that's a little too technical." We can negotiate with them at that point, but it gives us the leverage of...
I think that's what makes this much more effective, that we can break down and wordsmith it so that we could get to a place that meets our objectives and actually creates a cleaner environment. I'll support that language. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl?
I just love this interaction here. This is the healthiest part of a democracy, to see this kind of leadership interacting with each other. Just a quick question. A constituent talked about living on Wilshire in Vermont in an apartment complex. He's been trying to recycle since he moved into that unit. That apartment structure has no recycling. Where are we on apartment complexes and condo complexes in making that opportunity for them as well?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to plug our multifamily recycling program.
Please.
We have over 250,000 multifamily units that we've expanded those recycling opportunities to using the Blue Bin. It's a free program. We work with the tenants and the building managers and building owners to get Blue recycling containers to those buildings. So if any of the council offices have any tenants that are having issues, or a building owner or manager that is interested, please refer them over to us. We'll be happy to hook them up with a recycling program.
In other words, somebody watching this who lives at the corner of Wilshire in Vermont, what number should they call to go on record saying, "My apartment complex needs to do this?" And then we can give energy to make that happen.
Well, they can call our division number at 213-485-2210. Or they can look us up online at the Bureau of Sanitation's website, and we have all the contact information there as well, specifically for that program staff.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you. Again, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. Thank you for your hard work, your support, and let's call for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And I remember that public hearing that we held out in your community, that first time on the L.A. River, and really been a long process to get to this point, and appreciate your leadership on that issue. So, Madam Clerk, if you could, on the amendments that we will be voting on?
Madam President, I believe they were all friendly, or excepted as friendly. The first one was Mr. Smith that amended 2B, to change the language to 25 cent breakdown to 3% to retailers, 3% to the state, and 94% to the local. And I believe Mr. Alocón, when he was just speaking, he accepted that as, you know, part of his.
Yes, thank you.
And then there were requests for several reports back, and Mr. Reyes' motion to change the date from 2010, excuse me, 2012 to 2010.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Yes. Okay, so we'll vote, and since they're all friendly amendments, we will vote on all of those items together. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Congratulations to all. If we could just, we're going to take item 42. Before we do that, item 25 has been cleared up. There are no other questions on that. If Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on item number 25, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, on item number 42, we have one card, and then we will go, Mr. Zuma Dogg, on item number 42. Us on that item, we are closing public comment. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask the City Attorney and Staff, CAO's office, to come up to the table. Colleagues, we have an issue that's before us today that, over time, the city of L.A. has gone forward and created a number of bond issues that we've used to service a number of debt in the city of L.A. What we've found over time is that, and very recently, that due to the rating agencies, we have been given what appears to be consciously reduced ratings, which forces the city into buying very costly insurance to raise those ratings back up so that we would be competitive in the open market. And these ratings have been consciously dropped below what is done in private industry, even though the level of bonds that we sell are ongoing, that we have actually a zero default rate. But it appears over the United States that there is a collusion between the rating and the insurance companies that have cost municipalities literally millions and millions of dollars. And so we asked back in March or April for the City Attorney to begin to look at whether there was a collusion amongst raters and insurance companies, and whether the city was being asked to pay funds for insurance that was not necessarily appropriate. And so I'd ask Mr. Michelson to kick this off, is that we're at this point now where we are moving forward as it relates to the legal aspects of it, and I'd like him to give us an overview, and then ask Natalie from the CAO's standpoint to also comment, and we have with us today on this motion, asking for outside attorneys to come in to address this issue in behalf of the city. Can you hold my time, please?
Good morning, councilmembers. David Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney. Sitting with me here today, to my left, is Nancy Nishimura and Joe Kachet with the law firm of Kachet, Petrie, and McCarthy. To their left is Beverly Cook, who heads the City Attorney's Office of Economic Development Division, and Natalie Brill, of course, with the CAO at the far end. We are pleased to be here today and to speak with you and answer any questions that you may have. Councilmember Parks stated it correctly. He approached our office a number of months ago. We were pleased to work with him and to look carefully at this issue. The City Attorney's Office believes that the city of Los Angeles is a municipal entity, has been financially damaged by financial institutions and brokers in the purchasing by the city or investment by the city in various municipal securities, in particular, what are called GICs, Guaranteed Investment Contracts, and also our trans-bond financial documents, separate and apart, although related to some extent. We believe the city has been financially damaged by municipal bond insurance companies because of their practices and activities, and we will be shortly filing lawsuits against these financial institutions and insurance companies to try to recoup monetary damages on behalf of the city. Joe Kachet is a nationally recognized expert and with incredible experience, and has gotten great success, actually, for the city of Los Angeles quite recently for DWP. We will be working with their law firm, his law firm, I should say, and also with another California-based law firm, Rennie Sloan, Holtzman, and Sakai, in order to bring this lawsuit and to be successful. Joe, I don't know if you wanted to add some comments?
No, I think you've covered it. This is a situation where Bank of America has now gone into the Justice Department and basically pled guilty to dividing up the marketplace around the country. The city of Chicago has now filed, the state, certain states have filed. It's an action that's long overdue. I think money can be returned to the city of Los Angeles. I might add, two years ago, I sat before this very body, and I thought we could return some money to you on the manipulation of natural gas used by the city. I'm proud to tell you that within the next few weeks, you will receive checks for about $50 million. I think, obviously, we can make no promises, but I think this is litigation that is well-served for the city.
And to put this particular situation in context, our initial investigation indicates that there's probably more than $1 billion in fiscal year 2007 that the city has invested in these short-term financing vehicles, in particular GICs. And so imagine if the allegations are indeed correct, as we believe they are, that there's been bid rigging and collusion between the issuers of these financial vehicles and the brokers, even if it's just a number of basis points, that could be and should be a sizable recovery for the city of Los Angeles. These are never easy cases to bring, but that's why we want to team up with some of the best law firms in the country to get this done.
Thank you. And, Mr. Parks, I'm sure, did we know we were going to get that $50 million? Have we counted that in our budget?
Yeah, I would just like to see if we have the CAO, if she had some comments.
And before they speak, colleagues, there's a lot of noise in this council chambers. If we could ask if you have conversation staff to please go outside to make those conversations.
Natalie Brill, CAO's office. I think that the focus of the lawsuit seems to be more the GICs versus the bond issuance themselves. So that's really the city treasurer's purview.
But GICs is what, the insurance company?
The GICs are the Guaranteed Investment Contracts, where municipal bond proceeds are sort of parked by the city in order to get some return on that money, and then the money's available when needed for public works of improvement. And GICs is probably the largest vehicle where that money is parked.
Okay. Let me just, colleagues, if you want a thumbnail sketch of what this issue is all about, on the March 4th letter that we've given you today from Mr. Locklear, the treasurer, which our former CAO was one of the signers on it, gives you about a three-page, excuse me, analysis of what this issue is and what the cost could be as it relates to the city. It certainly deals from the state level, but when you talk about just a mere one-third of a percentage point, how much it could cost in real dollars, in the case of the state, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $102 billion.
Correct.
Of dealing with a third of a percentage point. So this is something that we thought was important, and for that $50 million that was spoken about earlier, just be aware, before we start spending it, that's for DWP. That was not in the city's general fund, but it's DWP's recovery, and we appreciate that effort, and we'd hope that we get at least that and more for this particular effort as it relates to the city's general fund. Is that, Ms. Cristovall?
Yes.
No? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. Do we know of any other cities or county jurisdictions throughout the country that are taking actions like this motion asks?
City of Chicago just filed for opening. City of Baltimore...
Chicago's third-largest city in the country, if I remember correctly.
Right, and the second-largest city in the country, we hope, will take the same action.
Okay. And why do you hope that we take that action? Who are we protecting here? Who are we restoring justice to?
Money back to your general fund.
But who does that general fund belong to?
The people of the city of Los Angeles.
That's right. The people of the city of Los Angeles.
Absolutely.
Who were elected to represent. And then also, do these violations, do they fall more in the ideal of fiduciary responsibilities that even brokers have, or they're more direct than that?
You can call them fiduciary duties. I call them criminal acts. They've gone into the Justice Department and said, "You got us." And the issue now is to prove what damage was done around the country to the various cities, counties, and states.
But with all due respect, there's contractual black-and-white language, and there's fiduciary responsibility that is inherently legally binding, right?
Absolutely.
So which, does it fall into both categories, or more one than the other?
Gee, all of the above. You've got written documents, you've got fiduciary duties, you've got common fraud, you've got everything above. You have even a failure to tell you that they went out into the marketplace and guaranteed all of these subprime loans, driving your interest rates down. So it's a combination of everything above.
Okay. Now, what, are there some names of some firms that might be easily recognized that have already been admitted to doing this?
Firms, you mean, no.
Financial institutions?
Versus Bank of America, Joe, you mentioned.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry.
I think the public has a right to hear some of these names.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bank of America, Bear Stearns, J.P. Morgan, Lehman, Merrill Lynch, Morgan Stanley, I could go on and on. I could read you 30 names of people, all of whom have been involved in the conduct in one form or another. The FBI raided two local institutions right here in Beverly Hills, CDR Enterprises. So there's firms all over the country that have been involved in this, some of the biggest on Wall Street.
Yeah, the names that you mentioned are some of the biggest, if not the biggest on Wall Street. CAO, you have something to comment?
This is the investment side of Wall Street versus, I think, that you're thinking of, which is the ones who sell and market our bonds. I mean, there's two sides to most Wall Street firms.
Correct.
One side is the actual investment, where they'll bid on a GIC, on a Guaranteed Investment Document, and then the other side, which is the people who buy our bonds, who sell them to the municipal marketplace. I think that's, and there's usually, there's supposed to be a wall between the two, which you're well aware, that one doesn't talk to the other, except at the highest level. So, you know, like, for example, CDR, we never use CDR. There are also swap advisors. We never use them. But, you know, these are firms that are common...
But we use all the other firms that they talk about.
As our brokers. I don't know how many of them received contracts for GICs, and I think that's something that they'll have to go through. But all of our bonds, most of our bonds, over the last five years, have some type of Guaranteed Investment Contract on our reserve funds, for example, so funds that were required by law to set aside. And that's really the area that we're looking at. From the other, the municipal side that you see me here talking about most of the time is different. They're not the same players, they're not the same...
But the constant in all of that, Natalie, is this is the public's money.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's the constant here.
Absolutely.
And the fact of the matter is, it's really disappointing to see such large firms violating both their legal responsibilities and their fiduciary responsibilities, and the people who take the hit are the people.
You bet.
Be it the people of Chicago, the people of Los Angeles, the bottom line is the taxpayer, the ratepayer, the person who is actually entrusting everybody up the line to just do their job and do it well. And unfortunately, what we have here is a breach of that, and I think it's important, I want to thank Councilmember Parks for bringing this forward, because I think it's important for us to be aggressive about this, and we need to send a message out there to the largest firms in the world, the largest firms in the country. If you do anything like this, past, present, or future, we're going to be diligent about making sure that we fight you, and that we bring you to justice, and that the people are protected. And that's what we try to do all the time, Natalie. We have exhaustive conversations about these big firms. We have exhaustive conversations about, be it $100 million bond, or a billion dollars of issuances, or what have you, and investments of tens of billions of dollars in our retirement funds and things of that nature. The people are expecting, and there's a certain amount of trust, and that trust has been violated in this particular case. And I think it's important that the city of Los Angeles be aggressive about it and make sure that we bring this situation to justice, bring these organizations to light, and that we not be shy about mentioning their names. and that we not be shy about mentioning their names when we find that they did something and they violated our trust.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're right on the money.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon?
Yes, I think I understood what you said, but I want to, I hope I'm not being redundant, but I want to reiterate it in my own vocabulary, and maybe it'll help me understand it better. When people approach us to put a bond out, they typically will say there's two strategies. One strategy is a negotiated rate of return, and the other strategy is to catch the market at a good time.
Right.
Historically, I've always preferred riding the market and figuring out what day is the best day to make the buy. Are you saying that it is the other terms, the negotiated rates, that have caught, or is that totally different and we shouldn't worry about that?
That's different.
Yeah, it's not the issuance of the bond itself.
Once the bonds are issued, we have the proceeds themselves that we have to invest. And we also, we don't have to, but we like to, because, you know, let's say we issue, you know, $100 million for a project.
Okay.
And because it's a three-year project, a third or two-thirds of that money will be invested straight out. So the city treasurer will go out and get bids for that money called a guaranteed investment contract. And these broker dealers will send bids in.
So I was, I don't have to worry about those people who are talking about those two different things?
Correct.
Absolutely.
It's after that.
That is correct.
The reason that bonds are involved is because the majority of things that we invest in such great amount are the bond proceeds themselves. So that's why.
But it really is not inappropriate rates of return on the bonds.
No.
It's how that you use the investments after that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. And I believe, Mr. City Attorney, item 22, we're fine to move ahead with.
I guess, Madam President, I believe item number 22 is fine unless Mr. Smith had some questions on it.
On item 22, we'll go ahead and vote on item 22. Madam Clerk, this is the green program approval fee. If not, we're going to, if you have lots of questions, we're going to go to item one because Mr.?
I just have, I had one question is, and I'm not so sure who was the author of this, where it came from, maybe Mr. Reyes knows about this, but I'm wondering why, if we're trying to encourage people to do green building, sustainable standards, why we're charging them to do that? If the city policy is to encourage green buildings, why are we putting a fee on them when they apply to do that? I thought we were trying to waive fees in the building process for these kind of buildings.
I read a letter during the Palm Committee that building and safety has to tool up more staff, a whole different set of standards, and so a fee was required to meet those demands, given all of the different items that has to be checked as you go through these changes.
But didn't we, I thought we already passed a policy to waive fees for a certain kind of green building, sustainable projects.
What we can do is, Madam President?
Yes, you want to hold it off for one day?
Hold off onto it? Hold it on the table.
Hold it on the table.
We'll get the staff to come in, and we can have a better discussion on that. Get your questions.
Okay, thank you.
If I could also jump in, the fee ordinance was last week, and this item, I advised it could not be added to the matter last week because it wasn't part of the agenda description. So now we're on the reverse side of that coin. Now, this is the team composition part of it, and the fee matter really isn't part of the agenda description. So it could be as a report back, to report back to Palm regarding the fee.
Well, that would be a good.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Smith? Okay, so we'll amend that on item 22 to have a report back on the fee-related items and its impact there. All right, that item is now before us as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 22, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Item number one, Mr. Reyes.
If we can open up the public hearing and continue the item, leaving the public hearing open, we have people here and we can continue this till Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two speakers, Mr. Zumadog on this item and Ray Reyes. Mr. Zumadog, you choose not to. Okay, Mr. Reyes? Ray Reyes? Okay, so this item will be continued till Friday. Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 27. That was called special for card.
Mr. Zumadog on item number 27?
My time is 39.
Ms. Donna Pearman out in the San Fernando Valley?
Okay, I'm not going to lift this past Councilman Alakon. You have the right and opinion on your fee waivers. Of course you love me to pass them all, and the council passes them all, why don't you pay for it? I have the right to grieve, disagree when you use special fee waivers, and along with the CRA. It uses up the money needed for city services, as I said, with the CRA who steal our money. Then you find new taxes, fines, higher meter fees, longer hours at the meters to make up the difference. I don't care if a lot of cities do this, they're all wrong. Some cities do have better ideas, so let's look at better ideas than using all these fee waivers. Fifteen people shouldn't decide what projects are worthy. I myself do not believe in block parties. It doesn't really bring people together. They're different, funny-looking handicapped. Some areas would exclude minorities who are not told these events beforehand. It's human nature to exclude or to discriminate. I know, I'm one of those usually left out. I don't believe you look at them beforehand, you scrutinize them beforehand, unless it's before it becomes an agenda item. Councilman Alakon, you feel these fees are worthy? I challenge you and the other council members. I will continue fighting for the use of our city called fee waivers that are frivolous, especially the Venice one, the over $500,000 that I unfortunately wasn't over here to say it. I don't see how anything could be that expensive. Our city is falling apart. We got more homeless people, and, yeah, so we, for once, you should not have any fee waivers. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, Ms. Pearman, you may be confused. This was item number 27 regarding the Proposition Q funding on that item. The item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 27, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item is item 34. Mr. Zumadog, you choose not to speak on item number 34. Ms. Pearman, you wish to speak on item number 34?
Yeah, because I didn't put a card on number 27.
You just spoke on item 27. We're now on item number 34.
Okay, anyway, I spoke on number 34. I'm against fee waivers.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 34, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
There's been a request for item number 42 to go forth with. Next item?
Next item's item 39, and that was called special for cards.
Mr. Zumadog?
Yay! Yes, yes, very important. This is about a ballot measure. The city council has a ballot measure that they like to put on the ballot, and I'd like to say first of all to the people at Los Angeles watching, you have to say no on all new ballot measures and all new bond measures, because here's the thing. Mayor Antonio, Los Angeles, took in record revenues, record revenues. However, the mayor went on an MC Hammer-like spending spree, and now we have problems, and now he wants to stick you with the bill so he can keep his crazed spending spree going, so he can get reelected. He's doing it on your tab, all right? So right now, this is, he wants to ta, Janice Hahn actually is nice enough to put this on the ballot for people, wanting to tax property owners, and they always put something up there to scare you into it. And this time, it's the gangs, and they're saying, Councilmember Cardenas said, "We need to pass this to once and for all end the gang problem." I am sorry, there is not any ballot measure that will once and for all end it, especially for only $30 million, which this will take in. Because if $30 million would have solved it, well, then we would have, America could get three of his campaign people on the phone and they could donate it right away. And also, the money, now, I am all for doing intervention and youth development and putting money back into the communities, but that happens every day right here. Federal, local, and state money that is being diverted, that's not making it to the community, that's why we have these problems in the community. That's why now they want to pass on a parcel tax on the ballot. I say vote no to it, because you're not going to late-night basketball your way out of it. The problem is, they think they could open up the basketball courts a little bit two hours later and that they're going to solve the gang problems. We need more to fix the schools, more, and make sure that the money that's supposed to go into the community makes it into the community and not front-ended management contracts. Then we wouldn't have this problem. No on all new taxes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearman?
About that 27 and 34 mix-up, anyway, because I didn't call in. Anyway, 39, this is why everyone wants to cede from Los Angeles. Folks, this parcel tax is a never-ending tax that will bankrupt a homeowner. It won't hurt the very same people it tends to take care of. Some of our poorest homeowners will lose their homes if are closure. When our poorest homeowners have to work two or three jobs, how are they supposed to have quality time with their kids? Kids who don't have adult supervision and love tend to go more to gangs. Pay for one thing, it doesn't get done at all, because you want more money on top of it, or it gets spent elsewhere. How much of this is administrative? I bet 80% will be spent on administration and studio and studies on gangs. No matter how much you spend on gangs, nothing will get done. Most of our gangs don't care how many programs you have. They love the sum of authority. They love to show you they rule the city, especially if it's wrong, because it's, especially it's wrong because the parcel tax goes directly only to the homeowner. People who don't have kids, our kids are, how do I say, are fine upsetting and doing well. These people's property tax are going out of touch. Do you need to touch everyone or nobody? Let's take it from the CRA, the Community Robbery Agency. Uses a ballerby money, so they feel the need to use a parcel tax. Both these wrongs of that housing and the parcel, and this gang, why should the homeowners have to take care of all the low-rent housing and this gang tax? Tax those who caused these rents to go up in the first place. How about the CRA? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearman. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Colleagues, we need to suspend the rules, since we asked item number nine to go forth with, needs to be reconsidered. So, Mr. City Attorney, do we first vote on suspending the rules and then on the reconsideration?
Yes.
Okay, so our first vote will be on the suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the suspension of the rules on item nine, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
The next item would be a reconsideration of this item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That item is now before us. We do have a public speaker card on this item, Scott Newkin, and I apologize, I'm mispronouncing your name.
Rucker, R-U-C-K-E-R.
Oh, Rock, I'm sorry.
No problem. I appreciate this time enough that you put in to reconsider this. I'm just a homeowner, and we are adjacent to the Porter Ranch development and SNS construction and the Porter Ranch development, and we've been fighting this fight against SNS construction for six years. They are destroying the landscaping and the actual integrity of our area. We are in a canyon of 2,700 acres with five ranches. SNS construction, from the onset of their construction, has physically depleted all our employment. We're in the studio industry filming, westerns that have been filmed there since 1890, and they have now depleted the physical industry there. There's no more filming. The people that make their living on boarding courses, the air was filled so much with dust from the actual grading and removing of 3 billion yards of dirt for SNS's grading to put these proposed homes in. And all they're doing, in my opinion, as an onlooker, and I had Dave Hanson physically at my residence, looking at his job site and the dust in the air that accumulates from his proposed site and what he's doing, and they are not being held accountable for anything they do. They continue in the city with their permits and amendments, but they don't even regulate the chemicals and amendments that are going into our LA River. The chemicals that they're from the hillsides, from the weed abatement and all the fertilizing and everything is going directly into our LA River, and no one's addressed that issue. There's erosion problems there, the wildlife is being exterminated from the physical canyon, and SNS is just being rewarded and not having to maintain any of their requirements of permits that they've received from the city of Los Angeles, and they're moving forth.
Thank you, thank you very much for your public testimony. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for your clarification, this was a plan that was approved in 1991, that the EIR was done in 1991, that there is a developer agreement with SNS Homes, which means the city of LA cannot change anything in there without the developers' approval or we pay them for their losses. And so this project is going to go forward, it has to go forward legally, we can't stop that. What you have before you today is a minor plan amendment, is to allow them to build 242 additional homes in exchange for which we get a school. And we've been complaining for years about the need for an additional elementary school in Porter Ranch. This allows them to relocate the property, pick up the land they need to have an expanded multi-level school, but just not just elementary, but junior high school as well, and in exchange for which we'll move some of the property down south, give them additional 242 homes. Out of a 10,000-home development, 242 homes. We get our public school, they've given us the land, it's going to be a bigger school than was planned, the benefits are tremendous for that community. This is a very good plan. It is vetted out by our neighbor council who supports it, and I fully support it and ask your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, the item is now before us again. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Yes, and I know Mr. Smith would like it to go forth with.
Thank you.
It'll go forth with. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Friday, September 12th for city business that meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today? Colleagues, any announcements? I know we do have adjourning motions, so if we could please ask everyone to rise for adjourning motions. Colleagues, I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Jerry Friedman. Jerry Friedman passed away on July 15th. Yes, Mr. Cardenas, R.J. Friedman from our community there, after a long battle with stomach and colon cancer. Jerry was a longtime resident of Sunland Tahunga and was always a welcome face when we saw each other, community meetings and events. Jerry was a man who took his commitment to his community and to his family very seriously. He leaves behind his wife, Lorraine, of 57 years, and a very large extended family. He was a World War II veteran and was a Burbank Reserve Police Officer for 10 years. He worked at Lockheed Martin for over 41 years. He was very involved in the local community, particularly his Sunland Tahunga Kiwanis for 31 years, and served in many leadership roles, which is where I first met him. He was president in 1984, he was community relations chairperson for 16 years, on the Board of Directors for 27, and was awarded the honor of being the Kiwanian of the Year five times, and a distinguished Kiwanian for six years, and was only one of four members who've been awarded a life member of the Sunland Tahunga Kiwanis. He was also awarded the Golden Mike Award from Sunland Tahunga Business and Professional Women in 2006 for initiating the first woman a member of the Sunland Tahunga Kiwanis, and was responsible for convincing them to admit girls into the Kiwanis T-Ball League. He also, there's many things that he was involved in, from the LAPD CPAB for 16 years, the Foothill Area Booster Association for 16 years, YMCA board member of the Verdugo Hills for 16 years, the Chamber of Commerce, veteran of foreign wars. He had donated 23 gallons of blood to the Red Cross Bank over years. He was a family man, someone who spent afternoons and evenings going to Dodger games with his son, Michael, and they would listen to Vin Scully at the game on the radio, because they liked hearing his replay of everything that was happening, and they would have a bit of a tug-of-war when a homerun was hit. And every time that Jerry's grandchildren came, particularly his granddaughters, he would make them breakfast in the morning, even after he was so ill, and he called them the bosses, because he made every effort to spend time with them. And so a celebration of his life was held yesterday. In lieu of flowers and in the spirit of service, the family has suggested donations of the In lieu of flowers and in the spirit of service, the family has suggested donations of sports equipment that can be purchased for the Verdugo Hills High School, and given out by the Sunland Tahunga, excuse me, Sunland Tahunga chapter of Kiwanis, the one that he belonged to for 30 years. He was an extraordinary man, and he came even in his illness. You wouldn't see him for a while, and then he'd reappear again, sometimes with a walker, sometimes with a breathing machine, but was there, really supporting Sunland Tahunga. He is survived by his wife, Lorraine, his children, Cheryl Friedman, Brian and Lori Ostrander, Mike and Wendy Friedman, his granddaughters, Katrina and Jessica, his sister-in-law, Addie Friedman, and his niece, Michelle Friedman. And I know our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife of 57 years. They were really an extraordinary couple. And I know Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alakon, I think, would like to be added to that as well. Any other adjourned motions? If not, yes, okay. Before we adjourn, Mr. Alakon has an announcement?
Yes, members, as you are well aware, the mayor is promoting the Summer Night Lights program, which is to utilize parks throughout the city in key high-gang volume areas, to use the parks till midnight. And so I am very pleased to announce that we will be having a Summer Night Lights program at Hubert Humphrey Park in Pacoima Wednesday, tomorrow, and there'll be food, and hot dogs, and there'll be swimming until 10:00 PM, basketball soccer, and mobile skateboard course until midnight. It's a great opportunity to work together with the community. These programs have been generating about 400 and 500 people, and we're hoping to have equally as many. I do know that the mayor has it on his schedule, and so without anything else interrupting his schedule, he should be there tomorrow at about 8 o'clock. And so I encourage the community, come out, not only to, of course, meet the mayor, but to enjoy the park and make sure that we take the park back.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.